Hello.
Good evening, Commissioner Gilreath.
Yeah, I was wondering. I am good. How are you?
Good. You were wondering.
If my audio was.
It is.
Every time I turn on lately, something asks me a different question. Do you want to join with your computer audio? I thought every time I turned it on, I should be joining with my computer audio.
Yeah.
Well, I don't like you asking me too many questions. I might think Attorney Bridges is interrogating me or something. Kwan, did you hear what I just said?
He hadn't connected to the audio yet.
Oh, okay.
He's trying. It's working. As long as he's interrogating you and not me, we're all good.
Hello, Mr. Fountain. How are you, sir?
Good evening, Commissioner. How are you? Ms. Bowen, how are you now?
Good. How are you, sir?
All is well. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Hi Danny, how are you?
Hi Teresa, how are you doing today?
I am good and tired.
What are you doing, tired?
Pulling out some weeds.
Well, I'm retired. I was tired yesterday and I'm retired today.
Oh.
Good evening, everybody.
Hey, Pat.
Pat, how are you?
I'm good. How's everybody doing?
Yeah.
It's real looking good, thank you.
Welcome to my world.
Hey Teresa.
Hello, John.
How you doing? I'm good. There's Mr. Fountain. Hey, Robert. David.
Good evening, Commissioner. How are you, sir?
I'm very good.
Good evening, Mr. Fountain.
Good evening, ma'am. How are you?
I'm good and you?
I'm blessed and highly favored.
Amen, amen.
Oh, dear. So, how's things going? Yeah, well, with you, Teresa.
They are, they are.
Good, good.
Pat, I'm sure you had a wonderful Mother's Day.
I did, Teresa. I did. The family gathered here Saturday. Everybody could be with their mothers on Mother's Day. And they surprised me with the prettiest money tree. Because my house is, the house everybody gathers at. So, it was a great day. And Sunday was a great day. How was your Mother's Day?
It was, it was very good.
How's your mom?
She's doing fabulous.
You give her my regards when you see her and talk to her.
I will. I tried to call old girl a minute ago and she didn't answer the telephone.
I mean, that's a busy lady. That's a busy lady.
Yeah. Hey, I was the speaker at our Mother's Day program this year.
Awesome.
Yeah. That was, that was, that was nice.
I saw a picture of your Aunt Jo and her brother on Facebook today. I gotta call them.
Oh, wow. You know.
Huh?
You know my mom's brother passed.
No.
Zeke, Zeke.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, services were Friday.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah. Yeah, but they're all doing fine, though. I was, I was really, really impressed because he was actually one of the younger ones. My mom is, but, but the older siblings and stuff, you were, I was just so proud of them. I mean, how they, they all showed up and they all participated and, and they actually were doing better. Because I'd seen two of them the week before, better when at the funeral and all the services that went along with that than at their own homes. I was, I was blown at how well they were all doing, even, even Uncle Fred.
Fred did well.
Yeah, I was so proud of all of them.
Were wonderful, wonderful. You extend my sympathies to her. I did not know that. I would have touched bases with Jo. But with, you know, COVID has got us so out of the loop now of.
Yeah.
You know, who used to do them just two-minute run-bys and say, hey, Jo, what's happening, you know, it's. It'll be better.
Hey, bro.
Hello, Mr. Fountain.
Kwan.
How's everybody doing?
Stephen, I've been better.
Hi.
Hello, Mr. Bridges. Tina, hello. Chief Cottrell.
Hey, Ms. Fields, how are you doing?
I'm doing good. Mr. Bridges.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hello, ma'am.
See everybody.
I tell you what, I got a report this past weekend with high praise for Chief Cottrell.
Wow, good.
Young man down in, down in Roanoke Rapids said to tell you hello.
Thank you. Don't know exactly why, but thank you anyway.
Take it while you can get it.
He said it was back, back from the Highway Patrol day, so.
Oh, yeah, I know what you're talking about now. Yep, that's good to hear.
He said it was Sergeant Major, Sergeant or something.
Should we give him a round of applause for that high praise?
Hey, Cindy.
Hi.
If I miss him for a few minutes this evening, please excuse me. I might have to rush out the door, just for a few minutes.
If I step away, I'll be answering a call from the nursing home. My sister hasn't been feeling the best today and they're supposed to be getting back with me. But it'll be only on a phone call.
Well, I spent yesterday morning in the operating room at Granville, so that was my birthday.
Oh.
And I've got, I felt better last night, but I'm feeling terrible today.
Well, happy belated birthday.
Thank you. I'm 22.
I'm glad things went okay.
Well, we see. We've got to wait for the results now, so, but I'm having some after effects and I might have to rush out.
Ah, did you say you're 22?
Yeah, I'm 22, yeah.
Oh, that's so nice. I'm so glad. I'm just 16.
I think I'm like 15, maybe?
Yeah.
I favor this part of this meeting because the truth is taking a beating.
Yeah.
Go, go, go on, Ron.
Mr. Norton, Alan, how's Alan?
So, John.
I'm good.
You're a May baby?
I'm good. The question is, how is John Tovey? How are you doing, sir?
I've, I was just saying, I'm feeling, I felt better yesterday. I'm feeling a bit rough today. I'm getting more bleeding today than I should do, I think.
That's because you've done something you're not supposed to have.
No, I.
I like being laying down with your feet elevated.
I, I should be, now I. Yeah.
Uh huh, uh huh.
I just want to know if they gave you, if they gave you a really good prescription and you got enough for all of us.
I, I, I didn't get many prescription. I had stuff while I was in there. Obviously, I had painkillers, but it's worn off today. Bit, I'm a bit sore and, as I say, I have to keep running too. I'm passing a lot of blood at the moment, so.
John.
So, John, did I hear you say you're a May baby?
Yes, sir. Yes, Kwan, yeah.
Yeah, my, my birthday is Friday.
Oh, Friday. Oh, happy birthday for Friday.
I'm a May baby, too.
Yeah, mine was yesterday.
Oh, okay. Well, happy belated. And do you believe in.
That sounds like a heck of a birthday present, too, to have to go have medical procedure on the birth.
I'm telling you, Alan, it was not the best thing in the world.
Who scheduled that?
My urologist. My doctor.
Kwan, since John is 22, how old will you be Friday? Since John is 22, how old will you be Friday?
Oh, I'm 33.
Wow.
You know, and you know why I say that number? Because my dad used to always say that to my daughter. I don't care how old he got, he would turn to them and, and you know, on each birthday, and he would say, I'm 33 years old. And my daughters would get so frustrated with him, you know, because they really, they took him serious when he said 33 and. And, and I don't know, up until the time he was in his 80s, he would always say to them, I'm 33 today. So, I'm using 33.
All right.
That's good. I'm glad to be associated with such a young group of people.
I'm telling you.
It's nice to be the voice of experience. And believe it or not, it is 7:01, so it is time to call this meeting to order. And let me, I gotta change my screen view because I need to see everybody who's here. It's good to see all of you all tonight. It is, we are assembled here for the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners's regular monthly meeting. It is Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, and it is 7:01 PM. And we are assembled here via Zoom, so I will do the roll call. And starting with, to my right, Commissioner Bridges.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Present.
Commissioner Curran.
Present.
Commissioner Tovey.
Present.
Commissioner Fields.
Present.
Commissioner Bullock.
Present.
Okay, I am looking for Mayor Pro Tem. I do not see him at this point. So, I will go ahead and.
He's there.
Excuse me? Oh.
He's here.
How did I miss you? Mayor Pro Tem. Are you here? Mayor Pro Tem, can you hear me?
I'm having trouble.
Okay, we'll take that as a yes because we heard his voice and hopefully he'll be able to stay on. I will read, "The mission of the City of Oxford is to serve and improve our community by providing high-quality, affordable services, sound planning for growth and development, and offering the highest possible quality of life while maintaining the public's trust through open communication and ethical standards at all times." And with that, we'll move forward. And we were supposed to have a prayer by Reverend Cam Ford of New Horizons Baptist Church. But he got in touch with us and was unable to join us because of technical issues. He is hoping that once we get back to face-to-face, that he'll be able to take a slot. And so with that in mind, I will offer up the prayer tonight. Many of you know that Jews pray in Hebrew, at least to start it is the language of our forefathers from over 5,700 years ago. Blessed are thou, our Lord, our God, King of the universe, for giving us life and sustaining us and enabling us to reach this day. We cannot merely pray to you, oh God, to end war. For we know that you have made the world in a way that people must find their own path to peace within themselves and within, and with their neighbors. We cannot merely pray to you, oh God, to end starvation. For you have already given us the resources with which to feed the entire world, if we would only use them wisely. We cannot merely pray to you, oh God, to root out prejudice. For you have already given us eyes with which to see the good in all people, if we would only use them rightly. We cannot merely pray to you, oh God, to end despair. For you have already given us the power to clear away slums and to give hope, if we would only use our power justly. We cannot merely pray to you, oh God, to end disease. For you have already given us great minds with which to search out cures and healing, if only we would use them constructively. Therefore, we pray to you instead, oh God, for strength, determination, and willpower to do. Instead of just pray, to become, instead of merely wish. Amen.
Amen.
And those last words in English were by Jack Reimer. Thank you. And we move forward to the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Fields.
Ah, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fields. At this time, we will consider adjustments to an approval of the agenda. Then I have a minor one. There are, actually, I'm not going to read them all, but there are three proclamations. We also have National Public Works Week, so I would like to, when I do the proclamations, I'll read one and do excerpts from two others. Other than that, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
To approve the agenda, any discussion? I will do the roll call. Mayor Pro Tem, are you there?
Present.
Excellent, thank you. Do you vote aye? Commissioner Bridges.
Aye.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Aye.
Commissioner Curran.
Aye.
Commissioner Tovey.
Aye.
Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda stands adopted without one addition. In order to provide for the highest standards of behavior and transparency in governance, our Board of Commissioners has approved a code of ethics to establish guidelines for ethical standards for ourselves and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct. Among those, that we should avoid impropriety in the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the board in an open, public manner. I now inquire whether any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of such with respect to any matters before the board tonight. If any member does know of a conflict or appearance of such, please state so at the time. Okay, let the record.
I don't have a conflict, but I do have a comment. I do apologize. I'm traveling, so I'm going in and out and I keep freezing, so. I just want to know what's going on. I should be home in about 15 minutes.
Okay, well, we will, we'll keep hoping that you're, you're able to hear us and we are able to hear you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. With that, I move forward to the presentation of the May Yard of the Month. And I believe we have Brian Cone. He is online and this is really awesome because they happen to be my neighbor. Well, you know, in Oxford, everybody is everybody's neighbor because we all live around the corner from, from one another. The nice thing in a small town of Oxford, but Brian and Ashley Cone are new to the City of Oxford, so it is, can. Brian, I'm going to continue with this, but can you tell us when you arrived in Oxford?
Well, I have, I officially arrived as a taxpaying resident this, this past August, but I grew up in the area. A lot of family from the area, so this is, this is very much has always been home.
Okay, well, that's awesome. But in the meantime, in the first year that you, you're here, you've gotten Yard of the Month, so that is awesome. So, Brian and Ashley Cone live at 119 West Front Street. And they, so you're not going to be able to see it. Well, no, it doesn't show up well on, on this. We got a certificate that says this is awarded to Brian and Ashley Cone of 119 West Front Street. In recognition of their valuable contribution towards the beauty of our community, presented this 11th day of May, 2021. And just an. And just an absolutely beautiful yard, looks like there are no weeds in it, wonderful pots on the walkway and steps going up to the front yard. Um, flags and pots up on the, you know, near the stairway going up to the house. It looks just beautiful. Uh, you will get a Oxford, North Carolina, clean, clean and green thing to put on your car. You will get, looking back, nope, that's not going to show up because it's too reflective, two hundred years of Oxford history, which was written in twenty sixteen for our two-hundredth anniversary by Lewis Molling. So you will get that and you will have your name put in the pot for drawing for downtown dollars to spend at any of our shops downtown that accept them. Uh, that will happen, uh, in six months. I think October is where we have our last winter. And, um, so I will bring these things around, uh, to your house sometime. And in the meantime, as much as we can on Zoom, I invite everybody to please give Brian and Ashley Cone a round of applause with our thanks for making Oxford beautiful.
Thank you to the, uh, to the commission. We, we appreciate it. We enjoy being a part of the community. I enjoy actually talking to you guys live. I've watched pretty much every, uh, recorded Zoom, uh, commissioner meeting to date. So hopefully we'll be able to do this in person, uh, when things calm down a little bit.
Mute myself. That's awesome. And is there anything in particular that you and Ashley are proud of in your yard?
I tell you what, this home has been here for a hundred years. There's been plenty of residents here that have contributed to it. We're just stewards of the home and of the neighborhood, so we're just happy to contribute. So I'm proud to be a part of the history that will endure on Front Street.
Well, awesome. Thank you very, very much for coming tonight to join us. And obviously we are happy to have you to stay zooming in. And, um, and have a wonderful day and thank you again for your contribution to Oxford.
Wonderful. Thank you and the, uh, thank the board.
You bet. Okay, with that, we will move forward to our proclamations. Uh, I am going to read the proclamation for National Police Week, uh, in full and then just quick excerpts from the others. Um, because everybody deserves their due. So National Police Week, May ninth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Whereas the brave men and women of law enforcement in Oxford and throughout the nation have answered the call to serve and protect our communities. And whereas our nation observes National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day during the month of May to show these dedicated professionals the appreciation they deserve. And whereas enduring long shifts in dangerous and unpredictable circumstances, law enforcement officers risk their lives so the communities, families, and people of our community and state can live in peace and security. And whereas the members of our and other law enforcement agencies play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all North Carolinians. And whereas members of law enforcement recognize their duty to serve all the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deceptions and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas during the worst of COVID times, our law enforcement officers bravely faced challenges and continued to protect our community, steadfastly assuring the safety of and providing a needed sense of security for our residents, workers, and visitors. And whereas our officers recognize the importance of gaining and maintaining trust, operating in an environment where their moral and legal authority is under constant scrutiny, and undertaking the critical yet difficult stat, task of addressing the actions of those affected by addiction, mental illness, and other conditions, still they run towards the unknown and its hazards. And whereas on Peace Officers Memorial Day, May sixth, twenty twenty-one, in North Carolina, we pay respect for those who have lost their lives in the line of duty and recognize with deep gratitude the critical contributions and sacrifices of all law enforcement officers and their families. And whereas we applaud the ability of our officers to work well in the face of these and other challenges and have incredible appreciation for their public service and commitment to making our community better for all. Now therefore do I, Jacqueline Vanderhorst-Serjant, Mayor of the City of Oxford, North Carolina, along with the Oxford Board of Commissioners, hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth through, excuse me, through May twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, as National Police Week and publicly salute the service of the officers of our Oxford Police Department and those in communities across our nation. And do we have Chief? I never can find people here. I'm, I'm not seeing a representative from the police department. Oh, there you go, Lieutenant Stockwell, please forgive me.
That's okay.
You know, of course, we would be doing grand applause for you if we were in the boardroom. We can still do grand applause for you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Chief is away at a conference right now. Um, but we're definitely, uh, we appreciate all the support that we get.
And, and we appreciate all that each of you at our police department do. And we thank you and we thank you and we thank you. And with that, I will move forward to National Preservation Month and just read, uh, a little excerpt. Whereas the North Carolina General Assembly has stated that "the conservation and preservation of historic districts and landmarks stabilize and increase property values in their areas and strengthen the overall economy of the state." And whereas the City of Oxford's heritage and historic character factors into its appeal to tho, those both living and visiting here. Now therefore, I, Jacqueline Vanderhorst-Serjant, Mayor of the City of Oxford, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim, along with the Board of Commissioners, uh, May twenty twenty-one as National Preservation Month and call upon the people of Oxford to celebrate and preserve the heritage of the cultures and historic structures in our community today and always. And we move forward to National Public Works Week proclamation. And I do see, I did earlier, our, yeah, there he is. Our new Public Works Director, Stephen Blasko, is zoomed in. So National Public Works Week is May sixteenth through the twenty-second of twenty twenty-one. Whereas the City of Oxford is currently investing more than fifty million into improving our underground utility system and the streets above and could not accomplish these valuable projects without the dedicated work of our Public Works Streets and Engineering Departments, along with the support of the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, the Division of Water Infrastructure, and the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Now therefore, I, Jacqueline Vanderhorst-Serjant, Mayor of the City of Oxford, North Carolina, along with the Oxford Board of Commissioners, do hereby declare and observe the week of May sixteenth through May twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, as National Public Works Week and encourage all in our community to recognize that the outlook of our city is impacted in no small measure by the quality of our water and wastewater systems and the conditions of our streets, which are soon to be repaved. And to therefore pay tribute to our Public Works workers at all levels and the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life. And so there we have it. Applause for Public Works. And Mr. Blasko, is there anything that you would like to say?
Well, we really appreciate everyone noticing all our hard work and, uh, it's nice to be recognized by everyone and, uh, thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. You guys work hard. I didn't put in there in all kinds of weather, in the worst of conditions, but we appreciate each and every one of you because it's not just the people that are designing the plans and, and, and doing all that, but it's the people with their boots on the ground and we do appreciate that. And thank each of you so much and we hope you'll convey that to the staff. And with that, we move forward to public comment. And we have two people signed up for public comment. We have Danielle D J Jones, uh, one oh five West Street. And, uh, Mr. Jones, I'm going to, there you go. We're going to let you unmute yourself and you take the floor and identify, uh, your purpose and what you would like to discuss.
Okay, thank you so much, um, Madam Mayor and to the other commissioners and staff and everyone else on the call today. Um, I just want to take this opportunity, uh, on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club, just to introduce myself. Um, my name is D J Jones and I have the privilege of serving as the, uh, CEO of Boys and Girls Club of North Central North Carolina. Um, a part of our organization is the two sites that we have currently in Oxford. Uh, we have one at one oh five West Street. We also have a location at West Oxford Elementary School. And so, um, I got here the week before COVID hit last year. And so I never had the opportunity to get out and meet everyone and really, um, tell everyone about myself, also about the program that we're building here, right here in Oxford. But, um, despite the pandemic, we had a strong year in twenty twenty, continued to engage young people, feed young people, um, open up remote learning labs and do all that we could to support the young people through that, um, abnormal time. And we're truly looking forward to twenty twenty-one and what it all has to offer, building on the success of twenty twenty and really engaging our total community to serve those young people that need it most. We cannot do it alone. No one entity or organization can do it alone to serve the kids in our community. But I think collectively, we can definitely put a strategy and a plan together to ensure that all young people have a chance for success and commit their goals upon graduation. Uh, we're here to build leaders. We're here to give hope, opportunity, and exposure to our young people. And we look forward to partnering with you all to make that happen right here in Oxford. So again, my name is D J Jones with the Boys and Girls Club and I look forward to further conversations with everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Does, do any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Jones at this time?
Yeah, I, I would like to ask, um, uh, Mr. Jones, um, I, I know that the pandemic had a tremendous effect on, uh, um, the operation and everything. But I was wondering, how many children did participate? What did the numbers look like this last year?
Um, it wa, it went, it went up and down. It went up and down. Um, right now, currently, we're serving about seventy or eighty kids between the two sites, which is, um, probably about forty percent of our pre-COVID average daily attendance. Um, some of that has to go, come to with just the number of kids we can have in facility. Some of it is just the fact that some parents still aren't comfortable having kids come back to the program. But, um, beyond that, you know, I think a lot of companies and businesses are having, um, challenges with staffing. And that's one of the challenges we're having here, right here in Oxford as well. So we're looking for not just anybody to serve our kids, but quality individuals to serve our kids. Um, because we know that young people that's with our kids, you know, they could say the right, wrong thing or do the wrong thing at one moment's notice can impact a kid for the rest of their lives. So we've been very selective. And so unfortunately, we're not at capacity right now, but with summer coming along, um, in a few months, we have a, a great summer program that we've been offering, a nine-week summer program, a four-day program. And so we're very excited about that. So we anticipate the numbers getting back to our COVID average daily attendance goal. And then as, um, society starts to open up a little bit and we get a lot more information and guidance, really getting back to, um, to about a hundred eighty to two hundred kids that we were sending a day in Oxford. And so, um, we went from saying, you know, a handful of kids to now we're about seventy kids, but we're still pushing forward because we know there's a lot of kids that need help. And unfortunately, we can't serve them all. Our facilities are big enough to serve them all, but we can definitely do our part to target those young people, like I mentioned earlier, that certainly need it most.
Uh, just a quick follow-up. Um, I know you were indicating that, that, you know, there's some parents that are, you know, a little leery about having their kids around too larger group. I was wondering whether or not the Boys and Girls Club, uh, put out information to the parents that staff, uh, are vaccinated or are required to be vaccinated or, or is that true? Um, because I think that that would probably give them some level of comfort if they know that, that there's a protocol in addressing the virus.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we're not in a position as an organization to mandate vaccination. Um, that's one of those things that we have to be real careful with mandating, you know, a vaccination. Uh, but we do have all the other safety protocols in place with the mask and the, all the P P equipment, temperature checks. Uh, we do not allow parents even in the facility. You know, they have to call in because we just don't know. Uh, but we've been doing that since September when we opened up for in-person, um, had these protocols in place. And so we don't want to be a hotspot, you know? We don't want, we don't know what the young people are going back to in their homes and what some of the underlying conditions may be. And so we have to be very careful, which is why we're not serving as many kids. And right now, we are calling our, our past club members to be the first ones that have the opportunity to come back into our program. But, um, and pretty soon we'll be opening up to an entire community. And even part of the orientation, parents will be informed of all of our protocols and practices and policies that we have in place to ensure the safety of our young people.
I would, uh, I would just like to say a belated welcome. We, we haven't met yet, but welcome to Oxford. And, uh, the Boys and Girls Club are a tremendous organization. And, uh, should you ever need any help or anything, please reach out to me, reach out to any of the commissioners. I'm sure we'd be more than happy to help if we can.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And I, I certainly will. You know, I'm not afraid to ask.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then we will move forward. Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. We appreciate you coming today.
Thank you so much.
And we will move forward to our next person who signed up for public, um, comment. And that is Joan Robertson. And do I see Joan online? Ms. Robertson? I'm, oh, hang on. Let me look. I, Ms. Bowen, do you see her?
I do. She's there.
Oh, yes, yes. I'm so sorry. Okay, so please unmute. And, and Ms. Robertson, for the record, if you will state your name, address, and the reason you are here to speak, we will give you the floor. And I'm sorry I didn't see you earlier.
That's fine. I wasn't seeing me either. Um, my name is Joan Robertson. I live at five oh two North Country Club Drive here in Oxford. And I'm here to speak to the, um, conversation that went on in the budget meeting last week about the, the pool. And, um, in the, in the meeting, um, I did a hand signal thing, but I don't know how that works on Zoom. I've, whenever I've been on Zoom, everybody's been pretty much open. And so I stuck my hand up the best I could and nobody ever saw that. So, um, I would just like to please ask that whoever's running those meetings, um, however you can figure that out, please take note because I did have some questions on that day and wasn't able to, um, get recognized to ask them. So as, uh, as most of you who know me know, I have a very inquisitive mind. So I went to, uh, look for some of the answers myself. And I actually got more questions than I got answers. So maybe, um, some of y'all can help to clear up some things. Um, I went to the minutes to see what, you know, the, the history of this thing has been. And, um, it looked like as far back as I could go, uh, in the short time that I had, that discussions on a pool have been going on since at least two thousand and eight. Um, and, um, we've had Rucker Park City Pool for many years. And apparently that was in operation at least since two thousand and nine because that was the meeting at which one citizen spoke. And, and he spoke several other times saying that that pool was old and it was soon closed. And I just wanted y'all to know it is still in operation. And I'm sure you do know that. I actually have enjoyed swimming in that pool for, um, several years over the past few. And, um, it's a, it's a wonderful facility and I've, I've really enjoyed being able to utilize that. Um, I found that in two thousand and eight, there was ten thousand dollars put into the budget to look for a property for a pool is, is what it stated. And then in two thousand and eleven, Commissioner Harris stated that he would like to see a five thousand dollar per year set aside in the budget each year for the acquisition of land for a pool site. So that statement that he made, I never could find anywhere that, where that was presented in the form of a motion and no vote was ever taken on it. So, um, at the meeting last week, it was stated that money had been being set aside since twenty twelve for this purpose. And I just wondered how you can move money based on a statement without a vote. So that So that was kind of the, the big question that came up is, you know, why was that done? And then since the plan seemed to be to purchase land for a pool, what I'm hearing now is that this is sort of morphed into a big complex with a pool. And somewhere in the minutes, I believe, I saw that the complex itself without a pool was part of a comprehensive plan that was done and that the projected complex was to be built by 2020. Obviously, that didn't happen, but, and I don't, I don't know what went on with all of that. I know how tight money has been and I've always been told when I pushed for recreational things that we couldn't afford it. So, but now with this complex with maybe a pool in it, it seems that that would cost in the range of four to five million dollars. And then when you start thinking about the operational cost, I'm sure it would be at least 200,000 or more a year for operating and then maintaining it. So my biggest question, I guess, is where is this money coming from? You know, higher taxes or a bond issue that, that translates into higher taxes, I'm not sure our community can, can afford that. And we've got so many people that have struggled, as, as it was just mentioned, over the last year and a half with, you know, not having jobs, not knowing what's going to happen. You know, gas is now going up, groceries are certainly going up. Our population is still small and many people are just stretched to the max. And I'm just thinking, I know some of our pools are even having difficulty getting lifeguards because staffing has become a problem as this last person just stated in many situations. And so what does our future hold? And I don't think any of us know the answer to that. But my feeling is that this is probably not a good time to be talking about raising taxes for such a huge project as, as well as it would be appreciated by everybody in the community. We do have a city pool, it's at Rucker Park and we have two splash pools in the area, one on Raleigh Road and one at the Gout. So I just would encourage you all to think carefully about this whole concept because it's, it's a rough time for many, many people at this point in time. I appreciate your allowing me to come and speak and not that I have any of my questions answered, but hopefully you will be forthcoming with much more information about this whole project if it is to move forward for all of the citizens of this community. So I encourage you to think very seriously about that. That's all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robertson. And Ms. Bowen, I know you did a summary for the board of the, of the things that you found in the minutes, many, much of which is exactly corroborated by what Ms. Robertson found. Could you be so kind and maybe share that with her? Because that will at least maybe answer the question about the money and the vote that was taken to put the money in, in, to the side. Could, could you do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Robertson. We appreciate you coming out tonight. And with that, we will move forward to the, well, let me ask a question because we had a, an email earlier today from Robert Fountain saying he would like to make a statement. But Mr. Fountain, it looks to me that you would like to, did you want to speak in public comment? Or are you going to speak during the public hearing for the Unified Development Ordinance?
Whatever your pleasure is, Mayor, thank you. Either one, it doesn't make a difference.
Well, then I would say let, we're going to go right to the public hearing. We'll let you go ahead and speak then, along with anybody else that chooses to, to speak. So with that, we have next on our agenda, item 4A, a public hearing to receive citizen input regarding the adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance. A meeting of the board will be held approximately 24 hours from now, at which time the board will consider adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance. So with that, I declare the public hearing open and invite, so we know, oh, it looks like I'm freezing, so I'm going to stop my, okay, hang on. I apologize, but when I freeze, I go ahead and stop my video so that you can hear me hopefully clearly. We have Mr. Fountain who would like to speak. So, Mr. Fountain, please come forward. Again, identify yourself and your address and make your case.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Board. Ms. Bowen. Robert Fountain, 115 Saddle Tree Road, Oxford, North Carolina, 27565. Just moved into Oxford, I think in December. So here is what we have. As a food truck owner, mobile food unit, myself and other food trucks have, we live in Grahamville County. We pay Grahamville County taxes and we look to expand what we do by offering our food to the citizens of Oxford and others. Much like what we do in other cities and, and other counties, we just have to find a common ground to where it's, I guess, a revenue builder for the community of Oxford as well, or for the city. And I would offer that there are ways that we can come to an agreement, either by a business license or a vendor fee or even Wake County and Raleigh, we have to pay 1% of sales to that community every time we operate within that city or within Wake County. So we would ask that you could consider allowing food trucks, because we live here, we do the same things as everybody else. We're held to the same health and sanitations by the Health Department, Mr. Peter Lambert, his staff, the inspections. We go through the same licensing as restaurants and we are held to the same standard, sometimes more so. But we have an opportunity to bring a different flavor of food, a different outdoor thing. And even like the hot sauce festival, when the food trucks come, it's another draw for people to come into our community. And we also have to look at how we can, if you go to McDonald's, Cookout, those places are always packed. So if we could have an opportunity to help service other residents and other business establishments within the city of Oxford with a permit or funding to the city to, you know, make it more equitable for everyone, I and along with other vendors would be very much appreciative. And we would always, would always welcome more opportunities to be in the community. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fountain. Are you able to reference a particular page or section in the draft UDO for the board to look at and for us to ask? We can also ask Ms. Hart and Mr. Yocely about that.
I think it's section three.
Right, and Madam Mayor, I was going to kind of elaborate on those, kind of explain what these regulations would mean. Maybe that would help.
That would be great.
So there's two categories for temporary food vendors, which are basically food trucks. Food trucks on private property are allowed with a temporary use permit for 90 days with no renewal on that same spot for one month. So you could be on the same spot, there would be an undeveloped piece of property. If you're on a piece of property that has an established business on it, you do not need a temporary use permit. So if you set up in the parking lot at The Roses, say, then you would not need a permit for that because that's a permanent business. You would only need it if you're like at a fair or something like that, that's on a private property. Again, for 90 days, you get it for three months, you could be there and then you'd have to not be in that spot for one month. For food trucks on public property, there's no maximum time. You just have to get a permit, a temporary use permit with the city.
And thank you very much. That was extremely helpful. So, Mr. Fountain, does that address your concern? Or are we still missing something in your mind?
No, ma'am, it, it's perfectly fine. We just want to make sure that we are, making sure we're paying our dues to the city. We want to make sure the city is happy with what we do and how we conduct our business.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Ms. Hart, do you have anything further you would like to add to that? I've lost her. Oh, there she is.
No, I think Mr. Yocely has covered everything. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during this public hearing? And I'm going to look.
I'd just like to, like to add that it is a great benefit to the city to have these food trucks at certain events that we have downtown. It's, it's good for the vendor, it's good for the city because it does attract people. So, and we'll also add that the food is good.
I would go as far to say.
As long as there's a permit, but I think there has to be a limited number of permits. You can't, you can't issue 100 permits.
Oh, Commissioner, you've just frozen.
But that is a good idea. I like it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Does, would anybody else like to come forward right now and speak during public? I see Commissioner Bridges.
I know that Commissioner, Mayor Proten had a question and I'll, I'll have a question after he's asked his question.
Okay, so do we want to do all that during our public hearing? Or, you know, I'm, I'm not always the best for protocol. Ms. Hart, should we go ahead and see if there's anybody else from the audience and then we'll close the hearing? Or we, we let board members can just as well speak during this as well?
I think they can very well speak just as well.
Okay, excellent. Carry on, Commissioner.
Like I said, Mayor, I know I heard Mayor Proten.
Yes, sir, you, you did.
Ask a question now. I can go ahead and ask my question if he doesn't have a question.
Yeah, I don't, thank, I, I did, but Ms. Hart answered it. I appreciate you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you very much. And, and I will also, so Commissioner Bridges, your question.
You know, I, I was just curious as to whether or not Mr. Fountain was running into any obstacles. I, I mean, I sort of got the impression that he is able to do in other locations things that he's not able to do here in the city of Oxford. And maybe I, maybe I read it wrong, but he just, you know, it was kind of like there were some questions he had about being able to do his business here.
Okay, Mr. Fountain, would you like to go ahead and answer that for Commissioner Bridges?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Bridges, as it stands now, we, food trucks cannot operate within the city limits of Oxford unless it's for a fundraiser or an event that is sponsored by the city. So like in most, we could go in Durham, Raleigh. There are particular businesses we could set up. They would have food truck rodeo spots. Even if you look in Durham on Highway 70 and Miami Boulevard, they have a food truck hub where three or four food trucks sit every day and they pay the same vendor fee, they pay the taxes for their sales for that day. But we are not allowed to operate within the city limits of Oxford. I think it's, we have to be out one mile outside the city limits to actually operate.
No.
But as, as we understand it now, and I'm going to let Mr. Yocely speak to that, Commissioner Bridges and Mr. Fountain, because that looks like it's changing now with the new UDO. So Mr. Yocely, you'll jump back in again.
Okay, just, just to say it one more time, with the, once the new UDO is adopted, if you're going to put or park a food truck on private property that has a commercial building on it, you do not need a permit. If you're going to park it on a private piece of property for a private event, you will need a temporary use permit. It can be there up to three months. If it's there for three months, it has to leave for at least a month before you go back to that same spot. For food trucks on public property, so events downtown, things like that, they don't, they don't, they just get a temporary use permit, there's no maximum time limit. It's just coming to play any department, get a temporary use permit to park downtown. It would actually probably be part of the special use, the special event permit. I don't know if the city issues one of those, but they are definitely, they will definitely be allowed now.
Okay, Commissioner Bridges, does that take care of it for you?
Yeah, I mean, it does. I, I mean, I, I sensed that, that there was something else that I was missing during Mr. Fountain's presentation. I mean, you know, I'm glad that's clarified now. I don't have a food truck, but you know, I, I figured he, he wanted to hear something that would allow him to do things here that he does other places.
So I have a, I'm sorry, I have a question for Mr. Yocely. So in reference to what Mr. Fountain was referencing as far as being in other communities with a fee associated, is that something that would be part of the UDO? Or is that something that is set up separately by the city in a fee schedule?
That would be in a fee schedule. I'm not sure how it's done. I'm not familiar with that practice. Because it sounds like there's some workaround to get out of privileged licenses that aren't allowed to be issued anymore or can't do those anymore. So I, I don't know anything about it, but that would not be in the UDO.
Okay, thank you.
So there would always be plenty of time to consider that if we, at any time, and particularly with recommendation from the planning department, it looks like I'm freezing again, I apologize. With recommendation from the planning department, we could look at fees on an annual basis. It's normally what we do along with the budget, correct, Ms. Hart?
I would say a fee should be involved anytime I have to write a permit.
Yeah.
It's taking up my time. I'm the only staff person here doing it. So certainly, you know, it, it needs to be a fee involved every time a permit is written.
Right, and it would be a zoning permit or temporary use permit, you know, that they pay a fee, whatever that fee is.
Excellent. So that would go forward and then this is a good time. Thank you, Ms. Young, for bringing this up because since it is budget time, then this would be the time to go ahead and consider whether this is something to be added given that we are about to change how we handle food trucks. So thank you very much. Any, any other comments from anybody, board or attendees on the UDO?
Madam Mayor, this is Brian Conigan. I just have a, I have a question.
Yes, please.
Follow-up to Mr. Yocely's definition of that particular section in, in reference to where you can place a food truck. Now, if I understood, if I'm reading this correctly and I understand your definition, you were saying that if Mr. Fountain or anybody with a food truck, for that matter, placed a, a food truck on private property that housed a business, we'll say Roses, since that was the example given, beyond the special use permit and obviously notification to the, to the county health department, they're okay. However, if they choose a piece of property that is private, let's say, this may not be the best example, but across the street from Roses, where the Lions Farm stand is, if that was just a vacant lot and they chose to operate there, that would, that would, that would render a 90-day term limit for them to have the business or to have their operation there with a, with a 60, you know, and then a 60-day stay or they wouldn't be, or they wouldn't be allowed to stay for a period of 60 days after the 90 days.
One month, it would be 30 days.
Yeah.
That's correct. And, and the idea, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, okay, I would, I, so aside from winning yard of the month, I, I, I work in food safety and regulatory compliance at the state and federal level and, and work with, work in private industry. I'm just curious as to the thought process into, into limiting. I'm just curious as to the thought process into limiting that stay to 90 days in those circumstances.
The idea is that these are temporary uses. So, the food truck or food trucks would temporarily be located on private property. If it's intended to become a permanent use, say like the food truck hub that is in downtown Durham, say, the city wanted to create a space for food trucks to come in every day or private property owner was like, I'm putting a couple parking spaces and some power and make some rent money, then that becomes a permanent use and then it goes through the site plan process or, you know, review of infrastructure, things like that. So, that's the idea, so keep temporary uses temporary. And when they become permanent, we treat them like they're permanent.
Okay, so there is a defined process for establishing that particular space for permanent use, let's say?
Yeah, that's correct.
Just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Yep.
Excellent, thank you very much. Could anybody else like to speak about the UDO at this time? Okay, then for the record, I have a couple of items that I emailed Cheryl about earlier today, and I would like to put them up there and also hear comments from Charlie. Charlie, one of them was referencing the latest version of the UDO map I had brought up in the first planning board meeting about adding the overlay, extending it from Industry Drive along Martin Luther King with the design standards to Hillsborough and another one coming from, I think, exit 206 on 85 down Williamsboro Street to town as a strategic entryway. Are we a little, I know Cheryl sent that information on to you or Ms. Hart. Do you, is that, is that a problem?
No, ma'am, I believe that I captured it correctly based on the email. In the, did you get the UDO that was updated this evening?
I haven't had a chance to do that, so.
Okay, I believe that I updated it according to the email. I sent that to the GIS technician who's made that GIS, who's made the zoning map. And so, it'll take him a day or two to get that updated and get back to us. So, that's taken care of.
Super, and so you were able to add those references to that section as well in the document itself?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you got those corrections on the names of West Oxford Elementary School?
Yes, ma'am, I had West Oxford Elementary School in there, but I didn't have at Oxford for the Masonic Home for Children.
Okay, excellent, then it looks like maybe there was a more recent version that somehow I didn't see. We also had a question, and this was asked by Lori Dutra. I think in that same first planning board meeting about the 500-foot separation for bars and taverns, and she asked it by email and you had responded that yes, it would not apply in the central business district because we're looking to have the separation board for 500 feet between bars and taverns as residential and in the central business district, we're trying to get upper story residential. So, that kind of conflicts with that goal. Are you, so are you going to be able to put an exception in on paragraph A on section 3.5.2 to say except for the central business district?
Yes, ma'am, the correction there was I was clearly doing too many things at once when I changed that after our committee meeting. So, I took CBD out of that list of requirements, so that is no longer a requirement downtown.
Excellent, thank you. I have also on page 51, page 67 in the PDF, at least on the version that I had with the special recreational entertainment events. And I had an earlier question about private entities sponsoring events in the downtown like such as the board will remember, before COVID, the hub, which is a private merchant downtown, sponsored a beer fest. And there was, it wasn't clear in the table listed on pages 50 and 51 that there is an opportunity for private vendors to do events downtown, which I believe is something that supports the downtown EDC's goals of having events without always putting the burden on city staff. So, would special recreation slash entertainment, would that be the vehicle by which a private entity could do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent, thank you. I, then there were some changes that we had submitted some time ago for, I guess, earlier in April, for the whole tree section, which was chapter eight. And it looks like the shade trees and parking areas insert was not added. And.
That's been fixed. The correct versions, the correct chapters or words are in there now.
Oh, magnificent, you were just making me so happy, thank you very much.
Of course.
And lastly, and I don't think there's going to automatically be a simple answer to this, but way back when, when the UDO committee was meeting, we discussed that in Wake Forest, they have an ordinance for vacant storefront windows.
Yeah.
And it looks like it's not included in our chapter five, and I dropped the ball on that. Is that something that would be included normally in this? Or because it doesn't consist of new development, do we need to address that separately somewhere else?
So, you're talking about empty storefronts downtown?
That's exactly it, that Wake Forest has a set of guidelines so that people can't have vacant storefront windows, which depress the appearance of the downtown central business district.
That would be a separate downtown development ordinance or something like that. I don't know that we could.
Yeah, Mayor, I believe that would be in your code of ordinances. Yeah.
Excellent, so I don't have to worry about it for this deadline and I can bring that conversation up again with our planning director.
Yes.
And I know Commissioner Toby, who's nodding. Okay.
I just agree with the, with some of these windows that you see are just not aesthetically pleasing as they should be, shall we say?
Okay, well, then I want to say, I want to express my extreme gratitude for the accepting comments, as long as you have, being so open to getting comments, Ms. Hart for working with everybody under the sun on this project and Mr. Yocle for just taking so much input into everybody that worked so hard on this. I don't have anything more that I need to bring up. Is there anybody else that would like to bring up anything before I close the public hearing? Okay, well, with that said, I'm closing the public hearing. I don't like it that you can't see me, so we'll see if I can do this without freezing. And as is usual, we cannot vote right at this moment because with the Zoom meeting, we need to give at least 24 hours before we take the vote, which would be after 8 o'clock tomorrow night. So, what is the pleasure of the board with respect to reconvening to take a vote on the UDO, which I think would make Ms. Hart over the moon happy?
Yeah, make a motion that we convene on Thursday morning, 8:30 to take a vote. Make that as a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and now we have to have the discussion on the motion for board members to consider their calendars. Any comments, anybody? Okay, I've got a thumbs up from Commissioner Bullock, yeah, give me a thumbs up if it works for you. Thumbs up Commissioner Gilry, thumbs up Commissioner Fields. Got it, obviously, from Commissioner Toby, thumbs up from Commissioner Bridges, thumbs up from Commissioner Curran, Mayor Proten, I can't, that works for you. Have I called on everybody? Did I leave anybody out? Okay.
I have my thumb up, you just can't see it.
Okay, that's great, thank you, Mayor Proten. So, it looks like we are good, we are reconvening 8:30 a.m. on Thursday, which would be the 13th. Okay, Ms. Hart, is there anything that you have to add?
No, ma'am.
I just want to thank you, thank you, thank you so very much. This has been such a big task. Excellent, so we move forward to consider adopting a resolution in support of the Tar River Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. The purpose of the Tar River Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan is to merge existing. Yes, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Go back to city business.
Bye, ma'am. You skipped the budget.
You skipped the budget.
Oh, gosh, I surely did. I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, Mr. Manager, that was not intentional. I started writing my notes on the wrong part of my agenda. And I just carried on from there, I sincerely apologize. City Business, item A. Let's receive the proposed 2020, the 2021-22 budget from the City Manager Budget Officer M. Allen Thornton and consider calling for a public hearing for the June 8, 2021 Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to hear public input on the fiscal year 2122 budget. A public hearing is required pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, paragraph 159-12B, that states, "Before adopting the budget ordinance, the board shall hold a public hearing at which any time any persons who wish to be heard on the budget may appear." And we will have the budget distributed with the June agenda. And I have a question about that later, but Mr. Manager, take it away and please forgive my egregious oversight.
Believe me, I don't mind, that's quite okay. You would skip it entirely, I'm good. And I will say that the M. and M. Allen Thornton does not necessarily stand for more, more, more. So, just get that out of the way right now. Okay, you do have, I'm assuming everyone has received their copy of the proposed annual operating budget for fiscal year 2122, fantastic. It is essentially the same as what we discussed last week in our Budget and Finance Committee meeting. There have been little to no changes in it. There was one change that I will draw your attention to, which was the addition of $25,000 for a new server. It'll show up in the Administration Department as well as in the CIP for the next year, which is, of course, 2122 in technology in that department. It is a server that we desperately need here due to our expanding technological needs as well as the fact that some of the technology that we have currently is just simply aging out and unable to function in a capacity in which we need if we're going to continue to grow. And you know as well as I do, here we sit on technology in a Zoom meeting, how much we now depend upon technology. So, that is the one addition that is in this budget that is different from what you saw last week. And of course, that means that the revenue had to be increased by $25,000 to offset the expenditure, and that was also done so in the general fund. We basically added another $25,000 to the projected ad valorem tax that we believe we will take in as that was budgeted in a very conservative fashion. And we believe we will achieve that goal and objective. And it is my pleasure tonight to present to the board and to the public, City of Oxford, with the fiscal year 2122 proposed budget. I would like to first say thank you to the board, to the citizens of Oxford for giving me this opportunity yet again to prepare a proposed budget to meet the public service requirements of the citizens of the City of Oxford and to plan for its very bright future. I also want to thank staff for their involvement in providing me with their departmental requests. Our departmental requests always receive close scrutiny and we certainly try to fund what we can in order to continue to provide high-quality services here for the citizens in the City of Oxford. I do want to give a special thank you to both Mr. Ung, the Finance Director, as well as the City Clerk, they did a lot of the actual data entry for the Budget Officer. The Budget Officer spent a lot of time putting the budget together in the war room back there. But I'm old school and I do it on pen and paper. And they get that information and then enter it into a report and then the final document, which is what you will see when we get to the point of the board actually adopting the proposed budget. A few highlights, the first thing that I will say is that I am not going to, you know, go through the entire budget for the board and for the public this evening. We did a lot of that last week. And I would also encourage any member of the public who has some questions or wants to understand more of the process of the budget and what it means and the deliberations that the board goes through to join us tomorrow as we have another Budget and Finance Committee meeting scheduled for 1 o'clock. And at that meeting, we will have Melissa Levine with Raff Tellis joining us to present the updated financial model for water and sewer. She is with Raff Tellis. And that model update is the update from 2016. So, be a lot of good information shared there. So, I encourage any member of the public that is interested in more of the intrinsic operations of finances and needs of the city and budgeting to join in that meeting tomorrow as well. I will direct your attention to the budget message provided by the Budget Officer that really touches upon the major objectives and highlights of the proposed budget. I will touch on a few of those now. Number one that is being proposed for fiscal year 2122 is no new ad valorem tax increase is included in the proposed budget for this upcoming year. So, hopefully, that will be taken as good news. We will seek to maintain the tax rate that we currently have and continue to strive to meet the goals and objectives of this board and the public and provide high-quality public services with the current ad valorem tax rate. The proposed budget does advocate for a 5% increase in water and sewer rates. And again, I do encourage everyone to attend that Budget and Finance Committee meeting where a lot more information behind the Budget Officer's request for the 5% increase will be delved into yesterday, or excuse me, tomorrow. At length, we will fully discuss the need for that. But basically, for those of you that understand what has been going on here with the City of Oxford for the past several years, we've engaged in a number of public utility or infrastructure projects that, for the public out there that is listening, they've noticed about the disruption to traffic and the roads being a little bit torn up. A lot of the debt service requirements associated with those projects, since several of them are being completed and have been completed, are now starting to come due. And we need to be in a position to make those debt service payments and stay in a good financial position within our water and sewer fund. That in large part is the reasoning behind the requested 5% increase in water and sewer rents. That in large part is the reasoning behind the requested 5% increase in water and sewer rents. The proposed fiscal year 2122 budget also does advocate for a $1 per month increase in stormwater fees for the citizens here in the City of Oxford. That stormwater fee increase is being requested to continue to build the stormwater fund to basically undertake necessary projects for stormwater here in the City of Oxford. And we're currently facing a few of those that need to be addressed as well as provide some funding for a new position in engineering to be the stormwater program manager as their primary duty and responsibility within the Engineering Department for the City of Oxford. Unfortunately, the state of North Carolina is going to step up their enforcement of state stormwater requirements for us here in the Tar-Panico Basin. And Oxford is going to have to move more quickly than some of our other sister communities across the state in managing our stormwater program. And with engineering as busy as it has been for the last year or two and will be for the foreseeable future with the projects that we have going, the projects that are coming onboard, as well as the new development interest and the plan reviews and simply management of those projects. Engineering is at the point where it needs to be expanded and a new staff person sought there. So this budget does propose the expansion of our workforce by one, and that is within the Engineering Department. The proposed budget for 2122 seeks to set the stage for the implementation of merit-based pay here for staff at the City of Oxford. And beyond that, the budget itself really tries to maintain the very high level of quality public services that the city provides. There are no other, excuse me, fee increases as you look through that schedule of fees other than the ones that I have just discussed. But the budget itself represents, I believe, a very well thought-out plan for the future. I will say that, you know, this current year that we are still under for the next month and a half has been a very unique one in trying to meet the financial needs of the City of Oxford and to forecast what is going on financially within the economy with the pandemic. The pandemic, you know, of course continues. We look like we're on the horizon of opening up and brighter days ahead and all those things. But we never know. I don't know that anyone really forecasted the pandemic in this current fiscal year and the effects that it was going to have on all of our communities. But in spite of the pandemic, I will say that the City of Oxford stood very well. It persevered and continued to perform on a daily basis. I want to continue to say thank you to staff. I don't think they fully understand, nor does the public, the fact that we stayed here every day throughout the pandemic, came to work every day, continued to work and continue to provide those high-quality public services. I've had some peers of mine to ask me, you know, why didn't y'all shut down or do what we did here? Do that like we did in another municipality? And my response has been, well, it's kind of hard to fix a pothole or pick up trash or put out a house fire or make sure that, you know, the police is performing public safety as is necessary on Zoom. And that is the reason why we continue to do what we do on a daily basis. And we are proud of that. And we are very proud that we are coming out of this pandemic in excellent financial shape as well as in fairly good shape personnel-wise. We are continuing to struggle with filling a few positions. And that's everywhere right now. People are just absolutely looking for help. And we are as well here at the City of Oxford. But the City of Oxford budget really sets the stage for this upcoming year, which we believe will be a bright one. We believe that a number of the development projects that we had really on the horizon for this current fiscal year are going to re-initiate and move forward. A lot of them, as you know, kind of pulled back in interest due to the pandemic. And that's certainly understandable due to the fact that you couldn't find people to do any kind of work or anything. So that stood to reason, but they never left. And they are coming back. They are still interested in progressing Oxford and making some development happen here. And we are really trying to utilize the budget as a working tool into the future, next year and beyond, to make sure that we are prepared in such a fashion as that we are ready for that growth. And I believe that the proposed budget does that. I will stop there and ask if there are any questions. And also to convey to you that, you know, if we really want to get into a lot of budget discussion, we can do that tomorrow at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting because we still have time to discuss the proposed budget, to make potential changes to it. And we can do that really up until 11:59 on June 30, 2021, until we get it exactly the way that we all want it to be. So I hope that the Board will accept the proposed budget. And I would request that the Board schedule the necessary public hearing for your June meeting. I believe that that's June 8, I believe. And set that public hearing for that date. As you know, there is a required public hearing for the public to have the opportunity to speak on the proposed budget. Once it's on the table and presented, it is being presented tonight. And I will encourage any member of the public that upon review of that proposed budget to contact me as the Budget Officer here with the City of Oxford and/or the Finance Director if they have any questions in regards to the proposed budget, and we'll be glad to answer them.
Not regarding the budget specifically, but I'm glad to see that these developments are still on track, you say? Alan, that all of them are still on track? I haven't heard anything about Hatters Creek for a while. Is that still on track? Are they still going ahead with that? Are we doing all we can?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I can give you an update on that on right now. That took up most of my day today, to be quite honest with you. We had a number of meetings and conversations, including with the engineers, with the development, and one of the principals or developer with the Hatters Creek project. I think that we are quite clear now on where we are going. And I think the Board will see the results of that in very quick order. In fact, what is going to be necessary for the Board to do in regards to Hatters Creek is we've been working on a sewer allocation agreement for Hatters Creek. If you remember any of the Public Works Committee meetings where we talked about Hatters Creek in that area and the restricted amount of wastewater flow that's available out there in that area. It's been a challenge because unfortunately, when the Walmart complex was built, the lift station that's out there down 15 wasn't built significantly larger in order to accommodate a lot of future growth. So there was a limited amount of capacity in that lift station and in the infrastructure out there. So we've been really trying to work through that issue. We believe that we have a solution. We also believe that that solution is one that the developer and development likes and thinks is appropriate. And in exchange for that, they want a sewer agreement so that they can have access to a certain number of gallons per day for this development. And right now, that agreement sits on the desk of the City Attorney as well as the legal team for Hatters Creek. And so as soon as we can iron out any potential legal issues or legalese or semantics, then what may happen depending upon how quickly the developers would like to receive that agreement. You will either have it in front of you at the June meeting or we may have to call a special meeting a little bit sooner in order to get that in front of this Board. But upon receipt of that agreement, that's what they need.
It's nice to see things are moving. It's going to be great for Oxford and the residents and for your budget next year, hopefully.
Oh, absolutely. And of course, you've got the Ivy Day Meadows. Meadows at Ivy Day, yeah, another planned unit development in front of you tonight. And we still continue to work through several other developments that people have interest in developing here in Oxford. And it's not all residential. There is some commercial development that has interest in Oxford as well. And we hope to see more of that, as you know as well as I do, that retail follows rooftops. And we're going to see a number of rooftops in the next few years.
That's great news. Thank you, Alan.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Other, yes, Commissioner Bridges?
Yeah, I know one of the meetings we had, there was quite a bit of discussion about turnover relative to staff in general, and in particular, the Police Department. I have been approached by a few business owners who have said things like, as soon as we get used to certain law enforcement officers who, you know, we sort of got attached to and we were getting to know, we come to find out they're gone. And I know that there's an interest for everyone that we have some level of consistency relative to our law enforcement officers. Because if we're talking about a better relationship with the community, it takes time to get to know the community. And that does include the businesses. So I guess that was a long way to ask my question about how we keep officers. Merit pay, is that something that, you know, the budget's going to address? And it may be that we need to consider increased salaries relative to certain level officers. So that's my question. And the other question has to do with whether or not our City Clerk has looked at the minutes relative to the monies that were supposed to be going into a pot for the swimming pool. I thought I heard Ms. Robinson say something about $5,000. And that is just not my memory. And my memory was that there was a vote of the full Board. Not that somebody made a statement and monies were being set aside based on somebody's statement. It was a vote. And it just seems to me, if you look at those minutes back around that time, we will know the correct amount and exactly what was voted on.
I will say before Cindy can hit unmeet that, and forgive me for the date, I'm looking for it right now. We spent a large portion of last week, I think we sent those out Friday. Is that correct, Cindy? I believe that the actual minutes that we researched regarding the pool project or the proposed pool project were sent out to all Board members on Friday afternoon. I would request and ask that you take a look at those minutes. And we can certainly continue this conversation tomorrow after you've had an opportunity to see them. But that's what we have found. We also even went through committee, many, committee meeting minutes, say that three times fast, of the Parks and Recreation Committee to see. Because if you read the minutes, certain things look like they got referred to the Parks and Recreation Committee for further review and comment. So it kind of went a little back and forth, and we started looking for things coming out of Parks and Recreation. Tina and Cindy did that. So they did a pretty extensive and exhaustive review going all the way back. We went back to 2005, looking at the minutes for any reference to the swimming pool. And the first reference was in 2005 because that is when the last Parks and Recreation Master Plan was done for the City of Oxford. And there was some discussion about it then as a result of the results of the Master Plan for Parks and Recreation back in 2005. So we carried it all the way forward to date, looking for any reference to the pool project. And those minutes that we discovered have been sent to each and every Board member. So I would ask you to take a look at it, and we can continue this conversation tomorrow if you'd like afterwards.
I would like.
Ms. Bowen, when you resend that information, when you send that information to Ms. Robertson, can you go ahead and resend it to Commissioner Bridges as well?
Actually, Alan sent that out. I scanned it him and he sent it out.
Okay, so we need...
Yep, I will send that again before I get out of here tonight.
Excellent. Thank you. And then if you could, Mr. Thornton, CC, Ms. Bowen, and she'll make sure that it gets sent on to Ms. Robertson. That is excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Bridges. Did you have any other questions for the manager at this point?
Well, I think I asked two questions.
Okay.
About merit pay relative to law enforcement.
Yep, I certainly do believe that the implementation of merit pay is going to help that situation. That is something that they have mentioned a number of times, even in exit interviews for some that have departed, have brought that forward. The Chief of Police, and I've had a number of conversations, he believes that will assist in retention as well. I'm just as concerned about, you know, retention of officers as you are and anyone else is. You know, for me, it's a concern about liability and having officers that have less experience. I'm not casting any dispersion on any of our officers. They all do a fantastic job and they all want to be incredibly professional. But, you know, there is no exchange for experience in law enforcement, just like there's not much exchange for experience in being a budget officer for 29 years. Haven't done that many of them. It helps, you know. So anything that we can do to retain those folks as they get to know our community, it helps them to be a better police officer, to know the community, to know the people, to know where to go for information. You know, some of our best officers are the ones that know the people of this community. Because if something happens, guess what? They know where to go to try to find out information without having to chase their tail a whole lot. So, you know, I agree with you that the loss of police officers is not a desirable thing. It's unfortunately something that a lot of communities are going through right now. We're experiencing it. We experienced it pretty good last year. For the last few months, knock wood. Um, for the last few months, knock wood, um, you know, we've, we've simply basically had the one retirement. Um, and we're hoping that that trend continues for quite some time without any additional exits. But we're facing shortages in uh the street department, um Parks and Recreation. Uh, I don't want to get into it too much with Tina lurking on here. Um, but you know, we're starting to have conversations about uh the operation of the pool this summer because we're keen to track lifeguards. Um, right now, right now, the labor market is, I'm not gonna say dried up, but uh it's tough out there. Uh, we're trying to do things like offering incentives for referrals. Um, we've, we've advertised on many different formats and media is trying to get people um interested in the positions that we have. You know, I even saw today, if you saw where Chipotle is, you know, trying to tell people that if you stay with them for uh three years, you can be making up to $100,000 a year kind of thing. So they're doing that because the labor market is so tough right now. And I don't know if we all need to go work for Chipotle, but um it's, that's, that's just my example of how difficult that it is. Um, but I agree with you. I think we do need to look um at just about anything that we can reasonably afford to do uh to do to try to retain the best and the brightest.
Yeah, and, and it seems to me since we tend to talk about how we spend our money wisely every time issue of food comes up, seems like we ought to think in terms of wisely uh using money when we train officers and we spend money to make them good officers and then they go someplace else. That costs us money. Um, so I hope, and I'm glad to hear that there are other departments who, who, who are concerned about retention. Because I think any department that has um employees that move on um um because of lack of merit pay and other uh ways that help us retain. And I hope we'll also include in that relative to law enforcement, the issue of take home vehicle. Um, we need to revisit that. I don't know um why other departments can have those kind of things and we tend to shy away from it. You know, there's a lot of ways we can save money.
I thought we voted several years ago to allow take home vehicles.
We, we did.
We do. It's, it's just uh, it's limited to 20 miles from Oxford. If you live within 20 miles, uh you can get a take home vehicle. That's, that's the current policy right now uh that this board adopted.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Thornton, can you tell us what percent, what is the parameters for your proposal for merit pay? Like, is there a percentage amount up to X percent or something like that?
I am looking at uh anywhere from, you know, zero to four percent um based upon, you know, your performance and how you perform and how, how good of an employee basically that you are. Um, so it could be up to four percent based upon the level of performance.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, I'm gonna take my picture off again. Other members of the board, do you have questions for Mr. Thornton?
I, I, I assume when you say, Alan, you say about performance, you, you, you're talking about training, if they train to a specific task within, say, the fire department or the police department, that they would get some sort of merit play, right?
No, not necessarily. That is um, that, that is another um area of conversation that we need to have, and we've been having it internally about um re-implementing um.
Career development.
There it is. You got it. It's getting late in the day. The career development um incentive um policy was uh.
Right.
Okay. Dropped several years ago. And we are looking at reinstating that because I, I, you know, it's hard to encourage someone to get like an advanced law enforcement certificate or a college degree, even two-year degree, um in spite of the fact that, you know, we assist in paying for that. Um, you know, if you stay with us, uh, we, we've re-implemented that a couple of years ago of assisting to pay for continuing education. Um, but we do not have currently within the city's policies, the career development um like we had before. Uh, but we've already started uh looking at what other municipalities are offering and uh are prepared to have that conversation uh at any upcoming personnel committee meeting uh that is necessary. Because I think it's warranted. I think we need to have that conversation about it.
I do have a question about the merit pay and not so much as far as the validity of it, but someone that does have a performance that earns them three, four percent increase, does that performance then become the norm for the following year? Or will a similar level of performance qualify them again for another merit pay? Well, I may not be able to answer that tonight, but that's something we definitely need to look at.
Yep. Well, uh, if I heard you right, um, my answer in response would be that um if merit pay is implemented in fiscal year 21, 22, uh if you were to receive a merit pay increase of, you know, one, two, three, four percent based upon your performance in uh 21, 22, that, that would not preclude you from the opportunity to receive a merit pay increase in 22, 23.
Well, the other thing is I asked if the second year I performed at the same level, would that automatically qualify me for a second one?
No, not necessarily. No, sir. Um, it would be based upon the uh annual performance review done by their immediate supervisor and what that immediate supervisor is recommending uh that they receive. It, it could vary from year to year. Would not be automatic.
But it would be, would it be safe to say, Mr. Thornton, that if the board approves the budget as you've proposed with merit pay, that you would be doing training with your managers to make sure that everybody understands how, what your intention is for how they evaluate uh employees and the standards that are set?
Absolutely. We would be um revisiting um the current performance evaluation form that we have now and, and what that means. And we may actually revise that um evaluation format that we currently have to something that um is a little bit, well, uh, I can't remember the exact terms that are utilized in some of the uh, the newer ones, but it gets away from um rating, you know, below standard, above standard, standard. It's, it's like meets objectives and those types of things. And it also uh allows for the employee to have a little bit more um feedback into the process of the uh performance evaluation and the potential merit increase.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Bullock, are you set? Is that, did your question get answered sufficiently for right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Other members of the board, any questions? Oh, Commissioner Gilreath, yes, please.
Well, just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. Merit pay that we're talking about is in addition to what's already proposed in the budget of giving the employees a five percent pay increase, correct?
Uh, there is nowhere in the budget giving an employee a five percent pay increase.
I thought we talked about that.
Do not recall a cost of living increase for all employees of five percent. No, ma'am.
And, and that was why I was asking the question then. Okay.
Is there?
So is there a cost of living increase at all?
Currently, there is not. There is no cost of living adjustment being proposed in the budget.
Ma'am, I think that's something that we need to discuss tomorrow at the budget and finance meeting. And I don't think I've learned enough tonight, or will learn enough tonight on merit pay to, to make any decision on it. Ma'am. Um, but what I would like to do is make a motion, because I think that's what we've gotta do, call for public hearing June 8.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Uh, we have a motion up. Let me mute, let me stop my video. I apologize. We have a motion by Commissioner Kern. Any discussion on the motion?
Is, is the motion to accept the proposed budget and call for the public hearing? That's, that's really what the request is.
Right. Well, the request clearly is staff recommends calling for the public hearing on the draft. Yes, so accepting the draft and calling for a public hearing at the June meeting. That, that is your motion, Commissioner Kern?
Right.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay. All in favor of the motion? I will do the roll call. Mayor Protem.
Uh.
Going from my right, Commissioner Bridges.
Uh.
Commissioner Kern.
Aye.
Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock.
Aye.
Commissioner Gilreath. Uh. Commissioner Tovey.
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And then I just have a question for the manager, so that motion passes unanimously. I apologize. I have a question. So the board received our draft budget today. How will we make this available to the public? Historically, we've had it on display uh up here in the executive suite as well as downstairs in the lobby. It is no longer, the building is still locked. What are you going to do to make this available for people to review?
We're gonna place it online. Um, the library is opening back up with limited hours. They'll receive a copy of it there for public display. Um, and we'll make uh certainly accommodations to anyone who wants to review a copy of it. Uh, all they need to do is contact the uh, any one of us here really, but the office of the city clerk or myself, and we'll make special accommodations for them to be uh provided a copy for their review.
Can, thank you. Can we put something in the paper? Because it, you know, for people online, it's great, but for people that aren't, I, it, it's harder to get that news. If we could put a little something in there that says there's a copy at the library and if we need more than one copy, let us know. We'll be happy to do that. And with the posted phone number to call if anybody requests a copy because they can't view it online, could we do that?
We'll make, gladly make that request of the ledger. Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
I can do that when I put out the uh public hearing notice.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Bowen. So then we are good with that. And thank you, Mr. Thornton, for entertaining all the questions, for the time that you and Mr. Ung and staff and Ms. Bowen put into preparing the budget to get it to this point. And um everybody that's worked so hard and for your clear and understandable presentation tonight. Thank you so much. With that, we move forward to item B, which I mistakenly tried to do a while ago. Consider adopting a resolution in support of the Tar River Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. The purpose of the Tar River Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan is to merge existing Franklin, Granville, Vance and Warren Counties Hazard Mitigation Plans into one regional plan, increase public awareness and maintain grant eligibility for participating jurisdictions. Planning process began in September 2020 and a fully updated plan is expected to be ready for the review by the North Carolina Division of Emergency Management and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Looks like I'm still freezing. Federal Emergency Management Agency by due June 2021. You do have support information in attachment 5B. The recommended action is that staff recommends adopting the resolution in support of the Tar River Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Uh, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Bullock. Is there any discussion on the motion? There being no discussion, I will do the roll call. Starting with Mayor Protem.
Uh.
Going to my right, Commissioner Bridges.
Uh.
Commissioner Kern.
I'm going to.
Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock.
Aye.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Uh.
Commissioner Tovey.
Aye.
That motion stands adopted unanimously. Thank you very much. We move to item C. Consider calling for a public hearing for the June 8th regular board meeting to hear citizen input on the planned unit development referred to as Ivy Meadows located off Ivy Day Road and North Country Club Drive. You have support information in attachment 5C. The city has been working with the developers for the past year regarding this 35.77 acre planned unit development consisting of 85 single-family homes and 36 townhomes. The Ivy Meadows PUD will consist of 4,570 linear feet of new street system, curb and gutter and sidewalks. The average lot size is 12,000 square feet with the minimum lot size being 8,825 square feet. The recommended action is that the staff and planning board recommend calling for the public hearing for the June 8th meeting. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tovey. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to just simply say, that sounds like a lot of people gonna be coming this way. Um, with all this development and stuff like that, uh, uh, that means our numbers are gonna go up with, in terms of population. So I think that's a great thing for Granville County and a great thing for the city of Oxford. All these nice developments we're having.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you very much. Any discussion from any other members of the board? Okay, uh, that, the only comment I believe I have is Ms. Hart. I think I brought up in the last, um, in the agenda meeting that it looks like the materials, uh, hang on, um, the declarations of covenants, conditions and restrictions of Ivy, Ivy Meadows subdivision still reference Franklin County. And if, if they referenced it, and it looks like they're still referencing Franklin County. So before we move forward with, with that, we'll make sure that gets straight, correct?
Yes, and, and matter of fact, I'm still taking any comments from the general public and the board um to convey to the developers as well.
Excellent. Thank you. And am I correct that I see, I didn't get a chance to look, but did you send something out today with an update? Can you speak briefly to that?
Yes, it was based on some comments that we received at the planning board meeting and it was regarding buffering.
Oh, excellent. Okay. So it, so that's right. It was an amended site plan. So has that been added?
Yes. Um, that's, that's been added for our review. And again, you know, I'm still taking comments for any improvements that we can work with the developers uh before it's adopted.
Oh, that's excellent. Thank you very much, Ms. Hart, and, and I appreciate you giving us that information. Any further comments by members of the board? Okay, then I uh will, we, we have a motion, correct? And so I will move forward and do the roll call. Commissioner Mayor Protem Harris.
Yes.
Okay. Starting at my right, Commissioner Bridges.
Uh.
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock. Commissioner Tovey.
Aye.
And Commissioner Kern.
Aye.
Commissioner Gilreath. Thank you very much. And I do not know why people bounce around on my screen, but you do. So I just go in the order in which I see you. Thank you. Moving forward to item D. Consider adopting a resolution to award retiring Captain Patricia Ford her service sidearm and credentials upon retirement. The city of Oxford can award service sidearms and credentials to a full-time law enforcement officer upon retirement. It is customary for that officer to formally request his or her sidearm and credentials from the chief of police or city manager, who then passes the request to the board for approval. Captain Ford has served the city of Oxford for 24 years. And in attachment 5D, I believe you have the letter of request from Captain Ford as well as the resolution, which I would like to read because we don't have the opportunity to salute her in person for that many years of service. So resolution by the city of Oxford to award retiring Captain Patricia Ford her badge and service sidearm. Whereas retiring members of municipal law enforcement agencies may receive at the time of their retirement, the badge and credentials worn or carried by them during their service with the municipality. And whereas the governing body of the municipal law enforcement agency, upon request by the retiring office, may also award to the retiring officer their service sidearm upon compliance with General Statute 14-402 or General Statute 14-409. And whereas Patricia Ford has served on the city of Oxford Police Department beginning April 28, 1997. And whereas Patricia Ford is retiring from the city of Oxford Police Department on April 30, 2021, and has requested her badge, credentials, and service sidearm in writing to Chief Alvin Coley. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Oxford Board of Commissioners that the city manager is hereby authorized to transfer to retiring police captain Patricia Ford at no cost the badge and credentials used by her during her service with the city of Oxford Police Department and her service sidearm, a 40 caliber Glock model 22 gen serial number PTA-864, upon compliance with General Statute 14-402 or General Statute 14-409. This resolution was adopted this 11th day of May 2021 and signed by the clerk and myself, or will be upon your approval. Recommended action, of course, is that we adopt this resolution. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Pat Field and Commissioners Kwan Bridges concomitantly. Any discussion?
Yeah, I want to say that I have known Captain Ford most of the years that she has been in law enforcement. And she just has been a tremendous asset to our law enforcement community. I mean, I have seen her develop, you know, from a low-level police officer to her present captain supervisory role. And I cannot say that I have met a nicer law enforcement officer, a more competent law enforcement officer. And I will tell you, I have been on both sides of the cases when Pat Ford has been involved. And what I mean by that, when I worked in the district attorney's office and, you know, certainly as a defense attorney, I have just been so very impressed with her integrity and her work ethic. And that's, it's going to be a tremendous loss for our police department. However, I understand when a person is put in time, you know, there comes a time when you say enough. And I will miss her. And I am happy that she's going to get her weapon and other recognition for her hard work for the.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Absolutely. Bravo to Captain Ford. 24 years is a long time to serve and protect, and we certainly appreciate that. Are there any other comments from any other members of the board?
Just thank you. Thank you for your service.
Absolutely. And I do not think she has zoomed in with us. She, you know, Ms. Bowen told us that she wanted to be kind of under the radar. But I have reached out to her on behalf of the board to express how much she will be missed by everybody. And certainly that's clear from Commissioner Bridges' comments and yours tonight, Commissioner Tovey. So with that, I will take the motion. I mean, I will take the vote on the motion. The roll call, Mayor Pro Tem.
Congratulations, Captain Ford.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bridges.
Aye.
Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock.
Aye.
Commissioner Tovey.
Aye.
Commissioner Kern.
Aye.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We move forward to the consent agenda, which means we accept the April finance report by Finance Director Ung and approve the April meeting minutes. What is the pleasure?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Kern. Any discussion? Okay, roll call again. Mayor Pro Tem. Okay, Commissioner Bridges.
I am just amazed at how many awards we have won because of the way that we do our finances. And I know a lot of that is because of the work of Mr. Ung and our manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you. That's great. Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock.
Aye.
Commissioner Tovey.
Aye.
Commissioner Kern. Commissioner Gilreath.
Aye.
Okay, excellent. That carries unanimously. And I'm sure we all agree with Commissioner Bridges' comment about so many CAFER awards. Absolutely wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Ung and Mr. Thornton, and all who precede you, because 18 years is a long time for awards. So with that, does anybody have anything to add? I will start with Mayor Pro Tem. Is he gone? I think he is. Okay, so we, nothing with Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Bridges, anything else you would like to add?
Yeah, I just want to simply say, because there was this discussion about emails and all this coming out there. I am actually on security leave, so I'm out of my office this week. And I hadn't looked at my emails, to be quite frank with you, because I'm trying to take a break from emails in office. But in any event, I don't have anything else.
You know, I think there are a lot of us in this world that would relish no emails. So that is certainly an understandable break to take. Absolutely. Commissioner Fields.
Thank you. Mr. Thornton had answered the question that I was going to ask in regards to what Commissioner Bridges just made a statement of emails. So thank you. Thank you, Ms. Thornton. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. And you're talking about all those pool updates, correct?
No, this was another email I got.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
Thank you. Ms. Thornton answered it, didn't you, Mr. Thornton?
Yes, ma'am. Anytime, anyplace, anyway, anywhere.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Commissioner Bullock, anything?
One thing quickly. On Monday, May 31, we will have a Memorial Day ceremony out front of City Hall there at the Veterans Memorial. One clarification is, we say from 10 to 12, we'll start gathering around 10 and have chairs for those that needed. The program will start at 11.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Tovey.
Just, just one thing. A few weeks ago, we had a very eloquent speaker about the dog leash laws. And the summer is coming up, and I was wondering if we can do something. Other cities have got their local laws about leashing. I wonder if we can get together sometime and maybe come up with something that will satisfy everybody. I'd hate to see these dogs tied out in the hot summer sun. Thank you.
So you're talking not about walking a dog on a leash, but the tether?
The tether laws, yes. The tether laws, sorry. The tether laws, yes.
Okay.
I don't want it to be forgotten.
What, what, what committee would that be best to go under?
I, I don't know.
Wouldn't it be an ordinance if we did anything?
An ordinance. It would have to be an ordinance.
It would be. So, you know, I'll get with the manager and Ms. Hart, and we'll send out a communication and discuss that.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Kern.
Nothing.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Nothing.
Okay. And I just want to thank everybody. Let's see on our dates to remember. I guess that Ms. Teak and Ms. Bowen and Ms. Young, you all will let us know when the bike rodeo gets rescheduled. Am I correct?
Somebody will, Mayor.
Okay. And so I was not wrong. It stayed canceled because somebody asked me about it, and I was like, no, no, it's been canceled. Good. Okay.
I believe it was postponed.
It was. It was canceled because we did not receive the helmets in the time that we were initially promised that we would get the helmets. So kind of hard to have a bike helmet rodeo without bike helmets. So it's, the rescheduling is really dependent upon when we receive those. But as soon as we do, we'll schedule it and get that information back out to the public and the board.
That's great. And if you can make sure, whatever communication that you include, Mr. Worthing at the Housing Authority, I know that he likes to try to rustle up his kids. That's something they enjoy, those that have bikes. So make sure he's on that notification list. I hope a bunch of you went downtown last Thursday night for the first quitting time in downtown Oxford. That was a wild success. There were people everywhere. And what was the most delightful thing to see is that people were really dedicated to trying to go from one business to another to patronize as many different businesses as possible. So I hope that you all will put that on your list. I think they'll, they, somebody had said to me, they won't know what will hit them because they will have more people than food. And that was exactly what happened. So that's a good thing when you have a lot of happy people in downtown Oxford on a Thursday night. And we see again, June 1 through the 30th, love local Xs and Os. Mary Young explained that to us. And the school's out for summer kickoff on Little John Street on the 4th. And then Cruze In to Oxford, 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. the first Friday, June, all the way through October 1st. But Mary, am I correct, Ms. Young, that on that first Friday in June, we will also have the movie Grease playing?
Yes, ma'am. And we'll have four food trucks, music, and the Cruze In will be there as well.
Excellent. Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion to recess until Thursday morning at 8:30 a.m. Oh, wait. Mr. Manager, did you have anything you wanted to add? I apologize.
I do. Very quickly, we do have our scheduled employee appreciation luncheon set for tomorrow. Right now, we are still going to hold it where we originally intended to hold it. It's going to be a little cool, but I don't think it's going to rain. It looked like from the weather forecast that I saw that the dampness is supposed to stay to our south. So we will begin, what is it, 11:30, I believe, at the Hicks Park Shelter. And it will continue on until such time as we basically go have our Budget and Finance Committee meeting. So, you know, you'll be well-fed before that meeting. But please come out if you possibly can, if you have a moment, to come out and say thank you to the employees and staff of the city of Oxford. That's going to happen tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And I apologize for not leaving you an opportunity sooner. And Mr. Burnett, is there anything else that you want to chime in with?
No, ma'am. I don't have anything to add. I'm not sure what happened to my video, but I don't have anything to add.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. And with that, we go to the motion to recess. That looked like Commissioner Fields and Bullock at the same time. And as you know, we'll do the roll call vote. And I do not see Mayor Pro Tem, so I start with Commissioner Bridges to my right.
Yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Fields.
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock.
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey.
Yes.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath. Yes. Thank you. It's been a long night. 9:08 p.m. God bless each and every one of you and all the staff and all guests who hung in. Have a pleasant and safe evening, and we'll see you soon.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.